Hearing the appeal of Tomlinson and Naby's against Birmingham City Council.
Yes, Mrs. Garry.
My Lords and my Ladies, this is an appeal about withdrawal of entitlements, in which I appear with my learned friend Mr. Zianabi, the two unintentionally homeless families in priority need. And our learned friends, Mr. Andrew Arden, Queen's Counsel, and Mr. Christopher Baker, now appear for the local housing authority, the City of Birmingham. Our learned friend Natalie Leaven, Queen's Counsel, appears for the Secretary of State as intervenor. Lords and my Ladies, I should inform the Court at the outset by way of update that Mrs. Ibrahim has left her temporary accommodation and has not recently been in touch with either my instructing solicitor or the Legal Services Commission. We therefore do not have instructions and we do not know her current whereabouts. She and her six children may very well still be homeless, but one can put it no higher than that. The Legal Services Commission, for their purposes, is content for the appeal to proceed on her behalf as well as on behalf of Mrs. Ali, they having been appraised of the circumstances.
So it is a live issue in Miss Ali's case, and you have instructions in that case.
Yes, indeed.
Thank you.
Lords and my Ladies, the starting point in this appeal is seven short uncontroversial propositions. First, the appellant's had an entitlement to accommodation. Their circumstances were such that the Housing Act required the authority to secure accommodation for them. Secondly, that entitlement under the Housing Act existed until either accommodation was secured or an event occurred upon which the duty would cease. Thirdly, an officer of the councillor's rule that the duty and the entitlement have come to an end. Fourthly, that withdrawal of entitlement was upheld on review.
Sorry, can you take it a fraction slower?
Sorry, my Lord.
The officers ruled that the entitlement ended.
The duty and the entitlement had come to an end. Fourthly, that withdrawal of entitlement was upheld on review by another officer of the same authority.
A senior officer, a more senior officer.
A more senior officer and with a different role. But an officer employed by the same housing authority in the same department. And fifthly, that second officer was not an independent and impartial tribunal, not being independent at all. Sixthly, and in our submission of particular importance on these appeals, the decisions that both council officers made was one exclusively a primary fact, whether a particular letter had or had not been received. So a decision not involving either specialist expertise or policy considerations. And in those respects, wholly unlike a question that also arises under the same part of the same Housing Act, such as whether particular accommodation is suitable.
But what about all the other factual issues that arise under Part Seven? I mean, this happens to be a particularly bizarre factual dispute about the arrival or non-arrival of particular letters. But there's a whole spectrum of decisions that have to be taken under Part Seven that begin with that which is a stark issue of did she or did she not get to the letter? To did she or did she not have accommodation available? What was accommodation, what was available? Did she or did she not leave it in circumstances where she could reasonably have been expected to continue to stay there? Other sorts of factual situations, was she or was she not in fear of domestic violence, all of these sorts of things. There's a spectrum that starts with the very stark either-or question, goes through a lot of other questions that are basically factual questions. Not a lot of expertise required, but factual questions in those homelessness decisions. To the rather more evaluative question, which is, is this suitable accommodation? And of course, there are evaluations involved. Was this reasonable, was it reasonable for her to continue to occupy, bearing in mind the housing conditions locally, all of those sorts of things. All I'm getting at is that we've been presented with this stark, simple factual issue and that's all you're focusing on, for reasons forensically I completely understand. But the problem before us really has to be a wider one than that, doesn't it?
Certainly, my Lady. And indeed, it's not merely forensic, it is fortuitous. Because in the Court of Appeal, there were three cases, the third being the case that had been the lead case and that was mentioned when this case was called on this morning, namely Tomlinson. Tomlinson was not a case about whether or not a letter had been received. It was a case about whether or not there was intentional homelessness on Mrs. Tomlinson's behalf. So that is an illustration, as Baroness Hale has indicated, one of a number of factual issues that may arise. Another instance, and only an instance amongst a number, is the question whether or not there is good cause for delay in, for example, asking for a review, which is essentially the same question as the question whether there was good cause for a late application for housing benefit, which was the very issue treated as an issue of fact that was dealt with by the Strasbourg Court in the Sofiyo case. So there are a number of instances that are plainly on the factual side of the line. One could enumerate them, I think they would get towards double figures. There are cases, at any rate, at the other end of the spectrum, which are plainly not factual issues but evaluative issues, such as whether accommodation is suitable, such as whether or not it's reasonable to leave or to refuse particular accommodation and so forth. And it may be that there are one or two questions where the categorisation would not be as straightforward as in some of the cases. These certainly are stark cases of primary fact on any view.
Well, they're stark partly because of the result of the review, which was against these two individuals. But if it had gone the other way, of course, it would have led into the system which would have opened up all the variety of questions that have been referred to. So one must be careful not to isolate it too sharply, I suggest, because it is all part of the system that's been laid down in Part Seven to deal with the homelessness problem.
Certainly, my Lord. If the factual issue is resolved in a particular way, then that may lead into other questions which may be of an evaluative nature and would be, therefore, a matter that fell so to speak on the Runa Begum rather than the Sofiyo side of the line.
Yes. Well, at some point, no doubt, you're going to tell us how this, how our system can live with a state of affairs where one has a whole variety of questions of different levels and have to be dealt with in different ways.
My Lord, certainly I'm going to come to the question of practical considerations which weighed heavily with the Court of Appeal and indeed with the learned judges in the County Court. And, my Lord, but in our submission, put shortly, it is a perfectly workable arrangement if that is what is needed, that one has certain aspects decided in one way and others in another. My Lord, my sixth preliminary point was that the, well, it's the point that I've made about primary fact.
We've had six, I think, yes.
Yes. The seventh is that although, and this indeed is the point that Lady Hale has already raised, that although both the Ali and Ibrahim cases involve the issue of whether a particular letter had been received, of course, cases that turn only on the resolution of fact can arise in other ways in the homelessness context, of which Tomlinson is an example. And, my Lords and my Ladies, this leaves two areas of major controversy. There is a third area of controversy in relation to remedy, whether it must be a declaration of incompatibility or not. But on the substance of the matter, two major issues. First, were the council's adverse credibility findings against both appellants and consequent abandonment of the council's housing duties towards the appellants, determinations of civil rights of the appellants for Article Six purposes? That is, therefore, the determination not only of rights, which plainly they are, but of civil rights. We submit that they were civil rights, that that is what the Housing Act conferred. And secondly, if so, does Article Six require a full merits review? In our submission, it does, in a case which turns on a simple question of primary fact with no specialist expertise required to determine it and no element of policy or discretion involved in the determination. My Lord, this latter submission, well, the former submission involves the determination of a case that was not determined as such in Runa Begum, but was the assumption upon which the House proceeded. The latter submission involves either distinguishing or overruling the decision of the House of Lords in the Runa Begum case on suitability of accommodation. My Lord, another way of putting that submission is that it gives effect to the decision of the Strasbourg Court in Sofiyo in the UK. And now also, we would say, to the very recent and important decision of the Strasbourg Court in Crompton in the UK, a decision more recent even than our printed case. My Lord, before coming in a moment to the first issue, that is determination of civil rights, I should perhaps say a word about the composite expression in Article Six, an independent and impartial tribunal.
Yes, I'd be grateful if you would, because I was uneasy about a passage in your written case where you simply asserted that the reviewing officer was not only not independent, whichever body would agree with, but that it had been effectively declared in Runa Begum that he could not be regarded as impartial. I think that Lord Hoffmann particularly chose this words with some care. And I think it's right to say Lord Bingham did as well. And so there is an area for debate as to whether the impartiality part of it was really met as well, it failed that test too.
Yes. My Lord, what I submit about that is this. First of all, that the expression, an independent and impartial tribunal in Article Six, led the House of Lords in Portman McGill to say that the convention test under Article Six, the independent and impartial tribunal, and the domestic test for bias have become one and the same, in effect that they are now in harmony. And as your Lordship indeed observed in Portman McGill, there is a close relationship between the concept of independence and that of impartiality. My Lord, in this case, it's common ground that the review officers were not independent. My Lord, actual partiality is not alleged. My Lord, but in our submission, the very lack of independence creates the appearance or perception of partiality because the first instance decision-maker and the reviewer are both employed by the same authority and the decisions they both make have resource implications for their employing authority. So, my Lord, although I say that impartiality is something separate from independent, in our submission, they're very closely related. And, of course, the lack of independence suffices whether or not there is impartial, a lack of partial, that there is impartiality for the purposes of Article Six being engaged.
I think that's Lord Bingham in Runa Begum in paragraph nine, paragraph, sub-paragraph three, was really making that point. He'd isolated independent earlier, but in paragraph nine, sub-paragraph three, he said the rules do not establish this person as an impartial and independent tribunal. I mean, taking it as a package. So I think you can take that out of it.
I mean, I'm sorry, it's not obvious to me. I haven't ever, I've never really had a chance to think it through. It's not obvious to me what case you could be said to be not independent and at the same time, however, that you are impartial. I mean, what does it mean, except for an apparent lack, apparent want of impartiality? I thought that's what not being independent meant.
My Lord, it may be that the key word is the word your Lordship used, apparent, in that
Well, you've agreed, this is a nice question, yeah.
If somebody is actually not, with independence, with independence, we're not talking about appearance, somebody is independent or they're not. So one's talking about an actual lack of independence. That may be combined with there not being an actual evidence lack of impartiality. But there will, I agree with respect, inevitably be the appearance of a lack of impartiality when there is a lack of independence.
The question is, clearly, you can be independent but not impartial. That's obvious. But the question is, can you be not independent and still be impartial?
That is the question.
That's the only question.
Yes, that is the only question.
And there are some subtle things that can be said, because they were said to us in the Croydon case, about that question.
Yes. And in the Croydon case, as I understand it, the argument there was that the officers making the decisions under section twenty of the Children's Act were not only not independent, but were not impartial. And it's difficult to see that the position really is any different under the Housing Act structure so far as that point is concerned. Lord, the Housing Act is in volume one of the authorities, a tab one. My Lord, what has been extracted into the extract is both Part Six, allocation of housing accommodation, and Part Seven, homelessness. Lord, so far as Part Six is concerned, allocation, we're not on this appeal directly, if indeed at all, concerned with Part Six. But as your Lordships and my Ladies will have seen from the printed cases, the respondents do seek to derive something from Part Six. So one should perhaps look briefly at its general structure. The introductory section, section one five nine, requires a local housing authority to comply with the provisions of Part Six in allocating housing accommodation. And for the purposes of Part Six, they allocate housing accommodation in any of the circumstances set out in subsection two. And then one sees by subsection seven that broadly a local housing authority may allocate housing accommodation in such manner as they consider appropriate but subject to the provisions of the part. I don't think we need to look at section one six oh, cases where provisions about allocation do not apply. Then at page four of the extract, there's section one six oh A, allocation only to eligible persons. And I can go on, I think, to page eight and to section one six six, relating to applications for housing accommodation. Subsection one requires a local housing authority to secure that advice and information is available and assistance in making such an application. Then subsection two, they shall secure that the applicant is informed of their rights. Every application must be considered, subsection three. And then the scheme, the allocation scheme, is section one six seven. Allocation is to be in accordance with the allocation scheme. Every local authority should have an allocation scheme for determining priorities and as for the procedure to be followed in allocating housing accommodation. And for this purpose, the procedure includes all aspects of the allocation process. The scheme is to include a statement of the authority's policy on offering people who are to be allocated housing accommodation choice of accommodation or the opportunity to express preferences. And then subsection two, as regards priorities, the scheme should be framed so as to secure that reasonable preference is given to five categories of people, the first of whom is persons who are homeless within the meaning of Part Seven. And then one sees after little e that the scheme may also be framed so far so as to give additional preference to particular descriptions of people within the subsections, people with urgent housing needs. And two A, the scheme may contain provisions for determining priorities in allocating accommodation to people within subsection two and the factors which the scheme may allow to be taken into account. And over the page, one sees after down the page in subsection four, the Secretary of State may make regulations. Subsection five, procedure, that's refrained in accordance with principles prescribed by the Secretary of State. But subject to that, the authority may decide on the principles to be framed. And then subsection eight, that the authorities shall not allocate housing accommodation except in accordance with their allocation scheme. Then, my Lord and my Ladies, we come to Part Seven, homelessness.
Before you leave that, is there an equivalent to section one nine three five where one has this formality of the letter and you're given notice that if you refuse the accommodation, the duty will cease to exist? I don't think there is in Part Six.
I don't think there is.
On the other hand, we know letters were sent in these cases, but they didn't have the same effect as refusal of a Part Seven offer.
I mean, under one six six two, there's reference there to one six seven four A, which is one that we skipped over. But four A, four capital A, little d, in fact, says you've got to be told about the right to review.
Yes. There are various provisions that you have to be notified of this and that.
Right, yes. Thank you. Part Seven?
My Lord, there's a distinct part of the Act relating to homelessness, Part Seven. Section one seven five defines homelessness and threatened homelessness. Section one seven six, the meaning of accommodation available for occupation. And section one seven seven deals with whether it's reasonable to continue to occupy accommodation. I think I could go and go a number of pages forward to page twenty of the extract. A group of sections dealing with application for assistance in case of homelessness or threatened homelessness. Section one eight three, the application following provisions of this part lie where a person applies to a local housing authority for accommodation for assistance in obtaining it and the authorities have reason to believe that he is or may be homeless or threatened with homelessness. Section one eight four then relates to the inquiry to be made. If there is that reason to believe, then the authorities shall make such inquiries as are necessary to satisfy themselves firstly whether he is eligible for assistance and secondly, if so, whether any duty, and if so, what duty is owed to him under the following provisions of this part. And then there's a notification requirement of the outcome and reasons in subsection three. And then section one eight eight, at the bottom of page twenty five, there is an interim duty to accommodate in case of apparent priority need. Section one eight nine relates to priority need for the various categories, including little b, a person with whom dependent children reside or might reasonably be expected to reside, which covers both the present cases. And then dealing with the post-inquiry situation, the post-interim situation, from section one nine oh onwards, the duties, the persons found to be homeless or threatened with homelessness. First of all, in section one nine oh, the duty to persons becoming homeless intentionally, so not our case. And section one nine one deals with becoming homeless intentionally. Then section one nine two, duty to persons not in priority need who are not homeless intentionally, again, not our case. And then section one nine three, which is our case, duty to persons with priority need who are not homeless intentionally. This section applies where the authority are satisfied that an applicant is homeless, eligible for assistance, has a priority need, and they're not satisfied that he became homeless intentionally unless the authority refer the application to another local housing authority, it doesn't arise here. They shall secure that accommodation is available for occupation by the applicant. That in our submission is the key provision. They shall secure that accommodation is available for occupation by the applicant. And then subsection three, the authorities are subject to the duty under this section until it ceases by virtue of any of the following provisions of this section. And subsection five, the local authorities shall cease to be subject to the duty under the section if the applicant, first, having been informed by the authority of the possible consequence of refusal and of his right to request a review of the suitability of the accommodation; secondly, refuses an offer of accommodation; and thirdly, that's an offer of accommodation which the authority are satisfied is suitable for him; then the authority may notify him that they regard themselves as having discharged their duty under this section. The local authority, subsection six, shall cease to be subject to the duty under this section if the applicant ceases to be eligible, becomes homeless intentionally, accepts an offer of accommodation under Part Six or accepts an offer of an assured tenancy or otherwise voluntarily ceases to occupy as his only or principal home the accommodation made available for his occupation. The authorities shall also cease to be subject to the duty under this section if the applicant, having been informed of the possible consequence of refusal and of his right to request a review of the suitability of the accommodation, refuses a final offer of accommodation under Part Six. An offer of accommodation under Part Six is a final offer for the purposes of subsection seven if it's made in writing and states that it is a final offer for the purposes of subsection seven.
Yes, yes, I see.
My Lord, before leaving these provisions, I should refer also further on to section two oh two at page forty four. That's the right to request a review. An applicant has a right to request a review in various circumstances. And subsection three, the request for review must be made within twenty-one days for such longer periods as may be allowed. And on a request being duly made, the authority shall review the decision. And then on page forty seven, section two oh four, there's a right of appeal to the County Court on a point of law. If an applicant who's requested a review is dissatisfied with the decision on the review, he may appeal to the County Court on any point of law arising from the decision. And subsection three, on appeal, the Court may make such order confirming, questioning or varying the decision as it thinks fit. My Lord, it may be, and my Ladies, it may be convenient while we have this volume open to turn to the last tab, which is the Review Procedure Regulations. And just to look at two provisions there.
I'm terribly sorry, Mr. Garry, just before we move on. I mean, the review provision under one nine three five, in terms, is a review of the suitability. Then you showed us two oh two, which tells you you can have a review of all sorts of other things. I mean, is there some initial decision as to whether or not this letter's been refused, been received about the consequences of refusal? I mean, is there an initial decision taken as to that, or is that...?
I think the practice of the authority, and no doubt of housing authorities generally, is to make a composite decision rather than to give a ruling on the question of whether or not a letter's been received and then to deal separately with any further questions that may arise.
Is it only on review that the whole question as to whether this letter's been received can arise?
Oh, no, because the initial decision is based on the premise that the letter was sent and received.
The initial letter simply says, surely, you know, we've offered you suitable accommodation and our duty is discharged. It doesn't actually...
No, the crucial letter is the earlier letter that says... No, the crucial letter is the earlier letter that says, you're offered this accommodation, and if you don't take it, that's it.
I know.
Then the further letter, I think the twenty first of March letter in Ali's case, is the one that says, well, you've had your chance, our duty is now discharged. And that gives rise, does it, to a review?
And that gives rise to the review of the discharge.
Under section two O two?
Under section two O two.
Head B, would it be, I think, isn't it? But it's a decision as to what duty is owed, if any.
Yes, so it'd be in two O two.
So the declaration they don't owe the duty anymore would be covered by that.
Isn't it F?
Well.
Well, I think it's common ground that it certainly comes under two O two. I don't think we've explored which provision it comes under within two O two. And there may be more than one candidate. And on my lord, Lord Brown's point on section one nine three, of course, the duty may cease not only under subsection five, but under subsection six or under subsection seven. And the interrelationship between five, seven, and seven A is by no means a straightforward question. But hopefully, one that is not necessary for the purpose of the resolutions these appeal.
But all I think I'm really asking is, I mean, it isn't until you get the review that anybody's going to be saying, I didn't get this letter, is it, or is it?
Well, certainly, once the authorities say that they've discharged their duty because you had a letter, and the person says, oh, no, I did not receive the letter, then, yes, their remedy is to pursue a review, to revisit that question.
So the reviewer is the first time at which anybody's actually going to be deciding yes or no was the letter received?
In one sense, yes, because the initial decision maker is making the assumption that the letter is received because of a belief that the letter was at any rate sent. Lord, the procedure regulations at tab eight.
So the reviewer is, I'm sorry, just to nail it, I mean, the reviewer is the first time that there's any decision taken, yes or no was this letter received?
Yes, that's the first time the question is addressed head on.
I suppose in practice, if somebody says, hang on, you've sent me this letter, but I never got the letter of the fourteenth of March. And surely it would be open to a housing officer if confronted with somebody saying that, if they believed them, to say, okay, I believe you. Why should they not?
No reason.
I mean, I appreciate the first formal opportunity to say, I never got it, is on the review to a senior officer, but if you can persuade the junior officer that you didn't get the letter.
Yes, but that, of course, does presuppose that you're aware that a letter was sent, which if you didn't receive it, you won't normally be aware until the authority indicates that they are resigning from their duty.
That's what I mean, in response to the letter of the twenty first of March.
Yes.
Mrs. Ali goes along to whoever the author of that letter is and says, or whoever she's been dealing with, Phil Dolan, and says, hang on. You say you sent me, you made me an offer on the fourteenth of March. Well, I never got any formal letter. All I had was a phone call or whatever it was that caused me to go along to see the property.
Yeah, and so the matter would then arise at that stage in that way.
Well, assume that takes three weeks. Is it too late then to seek a review?
It's too late to seek a review once the three weeks have gone unless time is extended. There is a power for time to be extended. But of course, if one hadn't received the letter telling one that the duty had been discharged, then you would have a rather strong case for saying that you could review, have the review out of time. But if you do get that letter, if Mrs. Ali and Mrs. Ibrahim got that letter, then, of course, they know then that the authority have proceeded on the basis that they had received an earlier letter that they'd not received. And there's no reason why they shouldn't put in their application for review in the normal way within the twenty one days.
Well, one can see to some extent in paragraph seven of the statement, in facts and issues, the way in which it works out until that stage is reached. Because she said she wasn't told what the address was that she was supposed to go to to view. And there was a telephone conversation and she was given the address. So there's a certain amount of common sense and practical solutions brought to bear initially, which may take various forms. But the really critical point is when the final letter's set out, I think on the twenty first of March, declaring that because the offer has been refused, the duty ceases to exist. And that takes us into the regulations, doesn't it?
Yes, because the regulations provide a fairly limited form of review. It's part three of the regulations, page three of the extract.
Which tab?
Tab eight, my lord, the last tab in the same bundle. And on page three of the printout is part three of the regulations that relate to homelessness. Regulation six, request for a review, a notification of review procedure. A request for a review under section two O two shall be made to the authority. There's no complication here as to which authority. And then sub two, except where a case falls within regulation seven, which isn't relevant for our purposes, the authority to whom a request for a review has been made shall notify the applicant that he or someone acting on his behalf may make representations in writing to the authority in connection with the review. So that's the limit of it at any rate at that stage. Namely, to make representations and to do so in writing. But then regulation eight, procedure on a review. The reviewer shall consider any representations made under regulation six and any representations made under paragraph two. Paragraph two deals with the situation if the reviewer considers that there's a deficiency or irregularity in the original decision, or in the manner in which it was made, but is minded nonetheless to make a decision which is against the interests of the applicant on one or more issues. If that is so, then the reviewer shall notify the applicant that the reviewer is so minded, and the reasons why, and that the applicant or someone acting on his behalf may make representations to the reviewer orally or in writing, or both orally and in writing. So it is still a matter of representations only. But in and only in the subsection two situation, at least the representations may be oral as well as or instead of in writing. That's the extent of the review.
Could one also perhaps notice regulation two on page two? Who is to make the decision on review?
Yes.
Because that bears on issues.
Yes, the officer must be someone.
Someone different.
Who is not involved in the original decision and who is senior to the officer who made the original.
Yes, but nevertheless, you say it is an officer of the authority.
Yes, certainly. And making decisions which have resource implications for the authority. And as I shall come to later, the review procedure compares in our submission unfavorably with the review or appeal procedure in relation to housing benefit with which the Strasbourg Court was concerned in the Sophia case upon which we rely. Lord, our submission on determination of civil rights proceeds in the following stages. First, a statutory entitlement arising where particular qualifying conditions are met constitutes a right. Lord, that's not an issue. Secondly, section one nine three subsection two of the Housing Act confers such a right. Again, not an issue. Thirdly, and again, not an issue, that right continues until it ceases by virtue of any of the following provisions of section one nine three. And fourthly, we submit, this is where one does enter into controversy. We submit that the decision ultimately by the review officer, that the right had ceased, was the determination of a civil right for Article six purposes. And that's the nub of the matter, the purposes of the first issue. Now, my lords and my ladies, it's well established, and not in dispute, that it is generally sufficient in order to constitute a civil right for Article six purposes for there to be an individual economic right flowing from specific rules laid down in a statute. So the six necessary, and we say sufficient, components of a civil right are, first of all, that there is a right. Secondly, that the right is an economic right. Thirdly, that the economic right is an individual right. Fourthly, that the right flows from rules. Fifthly, that those are specific rules. And sixthly, that they are rules laid down in the statute. In our case, shortly stated, is we submit that each of those components is manifestly fully satisfied. That looking at the question whether there is an individual economic right flowing from specific rules laid down in a statute was established as being the appropriate test by the Strasbourg Court in cases such as Celezi in Italy and Meneto in Italy, cases involving non-contributory social welfare benefits, as do the present cases. And that principle, we say, applies here. That the right to accommodation is an individual right as much as any cash benefit. It's an economic right as much as any cash benefit. It flows from specific rules in part seven of the Housing Act. And we submit the fact that part seven of the Housing Act may be regarded as part of a scheme of social welfare provision does not affect the Celezi Qualits classification. Again, it's clearly established by a series of Strasbourg decisions and is not in dispute that the right to a social security or welfare benefit is, notwithstanding its public nature, well capable of being a civil right.
Yes, two points. First is a specific one. I'm not quite sure to understand what you mean by an individual right, except perhaps it's a right given to an individual.
Yes.
Is that what you really mean?
Lord, yes.
So a particular person can stand up and say, I am the person to whom that right is given.
Yes.
Right, I understand that. The other point is that, looking at your six, your list of six things, it strikes me that it has a very wide reach, actually, in the whole area of social provision.
Yes.
I mean, we're dealing obviously with housing, but it may be difficult to see where one stops if you're right about that, if these are the components and the only components you need to have.
Well, my lord, there will be situations which will clearly be on the other side of the line. So that if, for example, one takes part six of the Housing Act that we looked at briefly on allocation, as indeed the House of Lords held in the Arnaud and Junum case, that does not give right to any individual rights, dealing with priorities of allocation. It doesn't give any individual right.
The National Health Service, the duty of the Secretary of State to provide a national health service, which I think is sitting there in section one of the National Health Service Act. That doesn't give rise to any individual rights to anything at all.
No, so there are plenty of examples of that. But I do accept, however, that certainly there are situations outside the housing field to which the same submissions will apply.
And did do in the Croydon case, of course. We heard all this argument at some considerable length.
Yes, and I'm going to seek to avoid to pursue this issue at any great length or to go back to material which, at any rate, some members of this court are very familiar. But the proposition that the social welfare schemes are not excluded on account of their being of a public nature in our submission as well established, and indeed has been established by Strasbourg authorities going back to Feldbrüger and Doimeland in the mid-eighties, and clearly stated, for example, in Schule Zragan in Switzerland more recently, and indeed, as we shall see, in Sophia itself. So it's no longer, therefore, controversial that the concept of the determination of a civil right extends to many questions arising in public law.
I mean, it's your submission's position here is really no different from what it would be if, instead of one nine three saying they've got, they shall provide suitable accommodation, it's said on these preconditions being satisfied, they shall produce ten thousand pounds outright.
Exactly. We say it's exactly the same. If you were provided with money with a view to it assisting you with your housing difficulties, that would plainly be caught in our submission, the fact that we're looking at a benefit in kind rather than a cash benefit, doesn't make a difference. Indeed, what we say it comes to is that if the right conferred by section one nine three is a right to a welfare benefit, then the right plainly does fall within Article six unless there is sufficient reason to exclude it. And that the issue therefore effectively resolves itself into the question, does the fact that section one nine three provides for a benefit in kind, a right to accommodation, rather than a benefit in cash, take it outside the general rule?
Well, there is a difference between the two, though, because the right to a cash amount, I'm assuming, is simply a matter of calculation. And the arithmetic does, it provides the answer for you. Whereas the word accommodation in subsection two does conceal within it issues which need to be addressed. And we can see later on that issues of suitability and so on have to be considered. So you can't actually say at the stage of subsection two that the individual can point to a particular address and say, that is my entitlement, can you?
But certainly, the entitlement may mature in stages. Just as a cash entitlement may mature in stages. You have a stage which establishes that you're entitled to get a cash payment. You have a later stage which quantifies what the amount of the cash payment will be. So too with a benefit in kind. It's a very real right, you have an entitlement to have accommodation secured. But then certainly, there will be the working out of the question of which precise accommodation that will be. There will come a point, of course, when there will be an entitlement to accommodation at a particular address. But in our submission, one is plainly in the arena of civil rights. And that there's no reason in principle why there should be an exclusion from the general principle by reference to the benefit being one in kind. In terms of subsistence, a roof over one's head is as vital as money in one's pocket and may not be achievable other than in kind if one doesn't have money in one's pocket with which to acquire one's own accommodation in one shape or form. We submit that there is no Strasbourg authority which supports any exclusion of benefits in kind. And we submit that such Strasbourg authorities that is on the particular point tends to support there not being such an exclusion. Lords and ladies, you will have seen in our printed case that in this connection, we refer to a series of Strasbourg cases against Russia decided after Runa Begum and considered, of course, in the A. N. Croydon and M. N. Lambert cases.
They didn't really seem to take the argument very far, did they? Because, am I right, they're all cases where it was really a question of giving effect to an order? The Russian cases?
Yes.
So, I mean, that's very interesting. It's perhaps quite clear cut, but it doesn't really solve our problem in this case.
Well, my lord, there are two. Well, there are two points I think I need to deal with in relation to the Russian cases. One is the point that's taken against me by the respondents and the intervenor on this appeal, that their case is about enforcement of judgments, and therefore of no help in a case such as this, which is not about enforcement of a judgment. We submit that's a bad point. And secondly, there is the point which commended itself to this court in the, or is in the process of commending itself to this court in the Croydon and Lambeth cases, namely that they proceed on a concession or an assumption rather than addressing the issue head on. Lord, as to the first point, in our submission, there are cases not merely about the enforcement of judgments, but about property rights, rights to a tenancy, rights to accommodation, and importantly, about maintaining consistency of approach in relation to Article six, on the one hand, and Article one of the First Protocol, on the other.
Yes.
And, my lord, no doubt the cases would not have been cases capable of becoming before the Strasbourg Court if the enforcement of the judgment was in relation to a right which was not a civil right. And the judgment certainly, in at least the Tarasov and Sibelenko cases, are clearly expressed both on the basis of the enforcement of the judgment and of property rights. And, my lord, we submit that the Russian cases should not be dismissed simply on the basis, there was apparently no argument upon the question whether a duty to provide social housing gives rise for civil right. Because the Strasbourg Court was at least plainly content to accept that there was. But, my lords, in any event, we rely on the decision of the Strasbourg Court in Steck in the United Kingdom in support of the important and relevant principle of achieving consistency of approach in relation to Article six and Article one of the First Protocol. Lord, that is the admissibility opinion, decision of the Strasbourg Court in Steck, referred to by your lordship
Yes.
in the Croydon and Lambeth case, not the final decision in Steck, which is in the bundles of authorities. But, my lord, our learned friend Miss Leven has very helpfully prepared a supplemental bundle of authorities, which includes the Court Tab, the admissibility decision in Steck, which is the more relevant one for present purposes. And, my lord, Steck, of course, has been applied by the House of Lords in the Crown on the application of RGM, the Work and Pension Secretary, which is amongst the authorities.
Were we applying the admissibility decision?
You're applying the admissibility decision, effectively, as I understand it, yes. Miss Leven was in that case. And, my lord, in the Steck admissibility decision, it's particularly the paragraphs from paragraph forty-six onwards, the approach to be applied. It's necessary to examine the phrase, the question whether a claim to a non-contributory welfare benefit should protect the protection of Article one of Protocol one. Then paragraph forty-seven, the convention must be read as a whole and interpreted in such a way as to promote internal consistency and harmony between the various provisions, referring to various earlier cases. It's noteworthy in this respect that in the case law on the applicability of Article six, the Court originally held that claims regarding only welfare benefits which form part of contributory schemes were because of the similarity to private insurance schemes sufficiently personal and economic to constitute the subject matter of dispute for the determination of civil rights, see Feldbrüger and Donneland. However, in the Selezy in Italy judgment, Article six one was held by to a dispute over entitlement to a non-contributory welfare benefit. The Court emphasized that the applicant had an assertible right of an individual in economic nature to social benefits. It thus abandoned the comparison of private insurance schemes and the requirement for form of contract between the individual and the state. In Schule Schruggen, the Court held that development in the law and the principle of equality of treatment warrant taking the view that today, the general rule is that Article six one does apply in the field of social insurance, including even welfare assistance. Then this important passage in paragraph forty-eight, it's in the interest of the coherence of the conventions as a whole that the autonomous concept of possessions in Article one of Protocol one should be interpreted in a way which is consistent with the concept of pecuniary rights under Article six one, and we would submit likewise the converse. It is moreover important to adopt an interpretation of Article one of Protocol one which avoids inequalities of treatment based on distinctions which at the present day are periodological or unsustainable.
So how I got this right, that the chronology is that it was decisions under Article six that first recognized that non-contributory cash state benefits were a civil right, and it was because of that that in Steck they said, and it's property within the meaning of Article one of Protocol one.
My lady, yes.
That's, that's the right way round. Not that somebody decided it was property under Article one of Protocol one, and therefore somebody said, well, of course, Article six must apply.
My lady, it was the formal way around.
It was the formal way, thank you.
And then the position is...
Are we, is there a comment on the distinction, if any, between benefits in kind and benefits in in relation to money? I'm looking, for example, at paragraph fifty.
The case concerned with money benefits.
Yes, and paragraph fifty, I think, is designed in that way, really.
It's expressed in terms of benefits, social security and welfare benefits. It doesn't tie it to cash benefits, but nor does it in terms say that it includes benefits in kind as well. The particular case was concerned with cash benefits. So that the question of benefits in kind is not dealt with in terms of paragraph fifty. But of course, although an entitlement to financial benefits can be an Article one, Protocol one possession, what is being held in Steck, A forty or I, accommodation is, an entitlement to accommodation is an Article one, Protocol one benefit.
Well, have we got any case law that says that?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, I didn't think we had, no.
But equally, no authority to the contrary.
You'd say it's an illogical or unsustainable distinction?
Yes.
Well, what about if she had got the letter? And she'd said, yes. Thank you very much. I accept your offer. Sixteen Bromford Lane, Erdington. And then they'd said, oh, sorry. Didn't mean that. Or don't want to give you that anymore. Now, would that have been an Article one, Protocol one right? You say, yes, it would have been.
Yes.
Because she would have had a, although she hadn't yet been granted a tenancy, she had had an offer which she had accepted to this particular property.
An agreement for a tenancy.
Yes, this particular property.
Yes.
But of course, we're talking about the stage before that's happened.
Yes.
When it hasn't crystallized into any sort of entitlement to this particular property. Any more than a right to accommodation under section twenty of the Children Act has crystallized into any sort of right to be accommodated by Mr. and Mrs. X. In fact, it never does.
That is perhaps rather different, where one has foster parents and whatever. We would submit that the position under the Housing Act is rather more crystallized than the position under the Children Act.
This is true. But, but it's interesting to explore, isn't it? To what extent these entitlements to benefits in kind might or might not be regarded as possessions for the purposes of Article one of Protocol one? Because your argument is that they go hand in hand.
Well, certainly I submit, if I come within Article one, Protocol one, and I come within Article six as well, I don't necessarily accept that I have to go through Article one, Protocol one in order to get within Article six. And, my lord, certainly we submit that whether rights to benefits are or are not civil rights for Article six purposes doesn't turn, and shouldn't turn on principle, on whether the benefits, the cash benefits or benefits in kind, provided, of course, that the rights flow from, not only that there is a right, but that the rights flow from specific rules laid down in statute. And, my lord, that in our submission is the present situation. Once the local authority are satisfied that the statutes retrieve criteria for providing accommodation exists, then the authority has no discretion. They have to provide the accommodation. And they have to do so, I say they have to provide, they have to secure its provision. It doesn't have to be direct provision. They have to secure its provision and have to do so irrespective of resource considerations, irrespective of local conditions of demand and supply. And we rely in this connection...
Can I just catch you before you go further? As far as section one nine three is concerned, it doesn't elaborate, I think, on the position if the offer is accepted. It just assumes that, well, when that is done, the law will take its own course. You then have, as it were, a balance between the authority and the individual. Am I right? There's not, I don't think there's anything else
Your lordship is right.
Find in the act. So that may reinforce the point, when you reach that stage, at least, you have something which you can say is an Article one, Protocol one right.
Indeed, indeed.
Is that right?
Yes, I mean, Lord Trend refers to paragraph C of subsection six of one nine three.
Yes. That's acceptance on part six.
The acceptance of an offer of accommodation made under the General Housing Allocation Scheme
Yes, yes.
will mean that the duty will cease.
But there is a specific provision that says that the mere fact that you've been provided with accommodation under section one nine three two does not mean that you have a secure tenancy for the purposes of the Housing Act. I'm sure there is a specific provision to that effect, yes.
Yes. And indeed, of course, commonly, authorities will not actually be providing the accommodation themselves, but will be securing it through nominations to registered social landlords or in a variety of means. And there are therefore various forms of tenure which will, which will suffice. But it is a tenancy that will be forthcoming. And we respectfully submit that the position is as stated by Baroness Hale, then Lady Justice Hale, in the Adden and Newham case, not the view of the majority of the Court of Appeal, but in our submission, the correct view. Well, that's in volume three of the authorities, the first case in that volume at tab ten. And Lady Justice Hale's judgment begins paragraph fifty-two, that's page two one three six of the The True Law Report. And at the bottom of that page, Article six one is set out. And then over the top of the next page, Miss Booth has accepted for the purpose of this hearing that the determination of an application for accommodation or for assistance in obtaining accommodation under part seven is the determination of his civil rights and obligations. And then continuing, the European Court of Human Rights has held that the general rule is that Article six one does apply in the field of social insurance, including even welfare assistance, see Schule Schruggen, also Feldbrüger and Donneland. Those cases were concerned what we would call social security benefits, but the Court pointed out that despite the public law features pointed out by the government, the applicant was not only affected in her relations with the administrative authorities as such, but also suffered an interference with her means of subsistence. She was claiming an individual economic right flowing from specific rules laid down in, in the case of Germany, in a federal statute. And then continuing with the judgment, a claim for accommodation under part seven is also, if it is accepted for present purposes, such a right. Once the local, and then this is the key passage, once the local authority are satisfied that the statutory criteria for providing accommodation exists, they have no discretion. They have to provide it irrespective of local conditions of demand and supply. Hence, this is more akin to a claim for social security benefits than it is a claim for social or other services, where the authorities have a greater degree of discretion and resource considerations may also be relevant. Nevertheless, as Miss Booth points out, the nature of the decision-making process required by Article six one differs according to the nature of the right being claimed, referring to Albert and Compton, Belgium, adopting the concept of full jurisdiction. But as Lord Hoffman explained in Alcombebray, subsequent European authority shows that full jurisdiction does not mean full decision-making power. It means full jurisdiction to deal with the case as the nature of the decision requires. In assessing the sufficiency of the decision-making process under part seven, must be relevant that authorities with all the internal and external controls to which their subjects are involved. On the other hand, decisions to house the homeless are quite different to the Secretary of State's decisions in planning and compulsory purchase with which the House of Lords was concerned in Alcombebray. In that case, Lord Hoffman drew a distinction between policy decisions, what public interest requires, which one one would expect to be taken by democratically accountable bodies, and the determination of rights, and there's then a short quotation, followed by this, decisions are under part seven of the nineteen ninety-six Act, and not in any sense policy decisions as to what the public interest requires. Policy decisions were taken by Parliament when it enacted the nineteen ninety-six Act. Individual eligibility decisions are taken in the first instance by local housing authorities. But policy questions of the availability of resources or equity between the homeless and those on the waiting list for social housing are irrelevant to individual eligibility. Lord, we respectfully adopt all of that. And, my lord, while we have the case to hand, later on in the judgment of Lady Justice Hale, there are observations which in our submission are relevant on the question of whether the result which we contend can be achieved by means of section three of the Act, rather than having to be a declaration of incompatibility.
Yes.
The old lady Hale refers to the, at the middle of page two one four two, to the guidance by Lord Stain in the Rate Shield case, which is perhaps still the high watermark of section three, if I may put it that way.
We've been one or two since then.
Yes, indeed. And then at paragraph seventy-five, on page two one four three, deals with it with the timing of the Rate Shield case and the Human Rights Act. And then just between F and G, this case would involve interpreting the words point of law arising from the decision, or as the case may be, the original decision. That is the words in section two oh four of the Housing Act, to include the question whether the decision-making process as a whole complies with Article six in the particular circumstance of the case. This seems to me to be plainly a point of law. The Court reaches the conclusion, the process will only comply with Article six. If the Court reaches its own conclusion on disputed questions of fact, then it can indeed, must give effect to its disposal powers under section two oh four three, and its procedural powers under the Civil Procedure Rules, so as to make good the deficiency. And then this is taken further a paragraph eighty. I therefore see the two possibilities as cumulative rather than alternative. I'm prepared to accept that the local authority may choose to contract out some or all of its reviews to a body whose constitution and procedures enable the decision to comply with Article six. But if they do not do so, and the particular issues in the case require an independent decision, then the Court should fill the gap. Lord, again, we respectfully adopt that. Lord, in fact, on the issue of whether the review procedure can be contracted out, which the House of Lords in Runa Begum was rather inclined to think might not be possible, the Court of Appeal has since held that it can be done.
I think it's worth noticing, I think it's the second sentence in paragraph eighty-one, Lady Hale remember, I'm sure, but it looked as though the discussion was one which was proceeding on a fair amount of acceptance by parties, it was a possible approach.
Yes.
I think in this case, that's not, the ground is not quite so, so smooth, is it?
I'd be interested to hear the respective contentions of my learned friends in relation to section three, section four.
Well, my understanding that it's only one paragraph is that although Miss Leven is against you on the substance of the matter, when it comes to remedy, she's with you.
With me. That's how I get her, yes.
Yes, it's, it's spontaneous.
Yes.
Good, thank you.
My lord...
Of course, one has to remember that Adan was decided, it was argued very shortly after the Act was in force.
Yes. And, Lord, this is, of course, an important feature of the statutory scheme, that someone who is in priority need and not homeless intentionally, and who is entitled to accommodation, doesn't lose that accommodation because they decline a particular offer of accommodation which they don't regard as being suitable, unless it has in turn been drawn to their attention, that they will lose the right. So it is important whether or not a letter of this kind is received. And more generally, part seven of the Act relating to duties to the homeless and their entitlements is very different from part six relating to the regulation of schemes for the allocation of housing, but not giving anyone a right to accommodation. Lord, if it's said that in this respect, part seven of the Housing Act is similar to section 20 subsection one of the 1989 Children's Act, then I respond, yes, in many ways indeed it is. And that assists me in that if who is a child is a question of precedent or jurisdictional fact on the construction of the Children's Act, then one has, of course, to look at the construction, in our case, of the Housing Act. And what, as this court has seen, is in terms of section 193 subsection five, there are two gateway questions of fact. The first gateway question of fact is, was the applicant informed of the possible consequences of refusal and of the right for contest to review? If so, the second gateway question of fact is, did the applicant refuse the accommodation? And then if both those facts are established, so that one is through the two gateways, then one has the further question, not a question of fact arising, the Roona Begum question, whether the authority is satisfied that the accommodation was suitable. So if and in so far as the authority is relying on section 193 subsection five, there are two gateway questions of fact, and then the suitability issue. If they're relying on section 193 subsection seven, then that is exclusively a question of fact. And, Lord, what we say is that these gateway questions of fact or exclusive questions of fact are eminently questioned for a court, either as precedent questions or as subsequent questions upon review or appeal. Lord, therefore, in our submission, there is a determination of civil rights. And the determination not being by an independent tribunal, the situation is one that can be saved if but only if the determination can be reviewed by a court with full jurisdiction. And that, of course, is the second issue. Does full jurisdiction entail a full merits review in cases such as the present? And full jurisdiction, of course, is not a static concept, rather it reflects the nature of the decision in the particular case. And, Lord, in determining what full jurisdiction entails in a given case, it is, of course, necessary to consider the subject matter of the decision, the manner in which the decision was arrived at, and the content of the dispute, as the Strasbourg Court has made clear in Bryan and other cases. And, Lord, fundamental for present purposes is the materiality of the distinction between, on the one hand, administrative decisions which require the exercise by experts of a policy-based discretion, not the present cases, and on the other hand, decisions which, as here, turn on issues of simple primary fact and no more. In the former category, of course, judicial review or appeal on law only, as that concept is conventionally understood, will suffice, but not in the latter category. And, Lord, we submit that the decision of the House of Lords in Roona Begum comes within the former category, concerned as it was with suitability of accommodation. Lord, Roona Begum is in volume four of the Authorities, at tab 20. A decision in early 2003. Lord's first at page 438 of the Appeal Cases Report, Lord Bingham, paragraph two, the parties were agreed, the appeal raised three questions, which they expressed in this way. Was the review officer's decision under section 202 a determination of civil rights within the meaning of Article 6.1? If so, did she constitute an independent impartial tribunal for the purposes of that article? If not, did the county court on appeal under section 204 possess full jurisdiction so as to guarantee compliance with Article 6.1? And the second of these questions is answered in paragraph three, not independent. That's an integral feature of the scheme. Paragraph four, one other question inherent in the first question, also lends itself to a summary answer, whether for the purposes of domestic law, Roona Begum enjoyed anything properly recognised as a right. The authority suggested not. I cannot accept this. Section 193.2 imposed a duty on the authority to secure that accommodation was available for her occupation. This was a duty owed to and enforceable by her, related to a matter of acute concern to her. Although section 206 permitted the authority to perform its duty in one of several ways, and although performance called for the exercise of judgment by the authority, I think it plain that the authority's duty gave rise to a correlative right in Roona Begum, even though this was not a private law right enforceable by injunction and damages. Thus, the first question, differently expressed, is whether Roona Begum's right recognised in domestic law is also a civil right within the autonomous meaning given to that expression for purposes of Article 6.1 of the Convention.
Yeah, thus far, we're in the same territory, is that right? Thus far, we're in the same territory.
Yes. And, Lord, thus far, I support what the decision says, the reasons that are there given. But then on the question of civil rights, from paragraph five onwards, where reference is made to Alcombebray, Lord Bingham states at paragraph six, the European Court's approach to rights deriving from social welfare schemes has been complicated by differences of legal tradition in various member states, as Lord Hoffman explains in Alcombebray. But comparison Felbarger in the Netherlands and Doimland in Germany in the 1986, with Salazza in Italy and Menotti in Italy, shows movement from a narrower towards a broader interpretation of civil rights. Further cases may no doubt continue that trend. To hold that the right enjoyed by Roona Begum is a civil right for purposes of Article Six would, however, to be go further than the Strasbourg Court has yet gone, and I'm satisfied that in the light of a compelling argument on this point by Mr. Sales, the Secretary of State, that the decision of that court would not by any means necessarily be favourable to Roona Begum. So I would prefer to assume, without deciding, that Roona Begum's domestic law right is also a civil right, and to consider whether on that assumption, that having regard to the nature of the right, the statutory provision of an appeal to the county court on a point of law satisfies the requirements of Article Six. Although the county court's jurisdictions appellate, substance the same as that of the High Court in judicial review, thus the court may not only quash the authority's decision under 204.3 if it's held to be vitiated by legal misdirection or procedural impropriety or unfairness or bias or irrationality or bad faith, but also if there is no evidence to support factual findings made, or they are plainly untenable. Or if the decision-maker is shown to have misunderstood or been ignorant of an established and relevant fact.
This is all fairly familiar stuff, it's describing the nature of the review, isn't it?
Yes, yes. And therefore of its limitations, it can deal with all these issues but no further. And so the question in paragraph eight, is this equality, is this quality rather of review sufficient to meet the requirements of Article 6.1 on the assumption that a civil right is in issue? Claiming that the county court judge may not make fresh findings of fact and must accept apparently tenable conclusions on credibility made on behalf of the authority. The question is whether this limitation on the county court judge's role deprives him of the jurisdiction necessary to satisfy the requirements of Article 6.1 in the present context. In approaching this question, I regard three matters as particularly pertinent. First of all, part seven is only part of a far-reaching statutory scheme regulating the important social field of housing. Administration of that scheme very largely entrusted to local housing authorities. While the homelessness provisions are intended to assist those individuals who are or may become homeless, there is a wider public dimension to the problem of homelessness. Secondly, although, as in the present case, an authority may have to resolve disputed factual issues, its factual findings will only be staging posts on the way to the much broader judgments which the authority has to make. In deciding whether it owes the full housing duty to an applicant under section 193.1, the authority has to be satisfied of three matters and not satisfied of another. Under 193.7b, the authority ceases to be subject to full housing duty if it is satisfied that the accommodation offered to the applicant was suitable for the applicant and that it was reasonable for him to accept it. Thus, it is the authority's judgment which matters, and it is unlikely to be a simple factual decision.
Yes.
And then, thirdly, there's reference to the review regulations. And over the page of paragraph 10, there's reference to the question of contracting out, and whether that be desirable or not. And then paragraph 11, in relation to the requirements of Article 6.1, a supplied to the review by a court, an administrative decision made by a body not clothed with the independence and impartiality required of a judicial tribunal. The Strasbourg jurisprudence, as in relation to civil rights, has shown a degree of flexibility in its search for just and workmanlike submissions. And then certain recent authorities of particular importance, including Bryan in the UK and Kingsley in the UK amongst others. None of these cases is indistinguishable from the present, but taken together, they provide compelling support to the conclusion that, in a context such as this, the absence of a full fact-finding jurisdiction in the tribunal to which appeal lies for an administrative decision-making body does not disqualify that tribunal for purpose of Article 6.1. This is a conclusion which I accept more readily because it gives effect to a procedure laid down by Parliament, which should, properly operated, ensure fair treatment of applicants such as Roona Begum. Then there is the speech of Lord Hoffman, and I can perhaps pick that up at paragraph 27 on page 445.
It's worth noting in passing is that he refers to Adan...
He does, at paragraph 18, and again at paragraph 20.
18, 22, yes.
Yes, and 22.
Right, so you're taking us to 28, are you?
Yeah, I was just going to refer briefly if I made it 27, but that's really on the point of independent tribunal. So it is paragraph 28, I return to the other two issues in dispute, and then refers to how they may relate to each other, referring to a dissenting opinion in Felbarger. Then in paragraph 29, the Strasbourg Court has been left to develop the law, has done so in two ways. First, it's been concerned to ensure that state parties do not exploit the gap left in Article Six by changing their law so as to convert a question which would ordinarily be regarded as appropriate for civil adjudication into an administrative decision outside the reach of the article. It has done this by treating civil rights and obligations as an autonomous concept, not dependent upon the domestic law classification of the right or obligation which a citizen should have access to a court to determine, referring to Golda. And paragraph 30, the second development has been the doctrine, starting with Ring Hyphen and Austria in 1971, by which the Strasbourg Court has extended Article Six to cover a wide range of administrative decision-making on the ground that the decision determines or decisively affects rights or obligations in private law, then a reference to Alcombebray. And then more recently, the scope of Article Six has also been extended to public law rights, such as entitlement to social security or welfare benefit under publicly funded statutory schemes, on the ground that they closely resemble rights in private law, referring to Salazza in Italy.
Now, are you going to read very extensively from this opinion, or?
I was going to read from, in particular, paragraphs 33 to 43 of Lord Hoffman's speech. One can perhaps...
Well, I think if you identify the passages you particularly want us to look at, it'd save a bit of time.
Lord, paragraph 33, he refers to Bryan and the landmark case of Bryan, full jurisdiction nature of the jurisdiction to deal with the case as the nature of the decision requires. Then paragraph 36, I turn to the two issues and takes first the third issue, that is, assuming that there is a civil right, whether an appeal suffices. And, Lord, that's dealt with between paragraph 37 and 60. And then from paragraph 61 onwards, the second issue, the question of civil rights or determination, is dealt with through almost the end of Lord Hoffman's speech.
Yes, yes.
And, Lord, in our submission, those are important passages. Then, Lord, at paragraph 73, your lordship agrees with Lord Bingham and Lord Hoffman. And then from paragraph 74, Lord Millet, he deals with the issue whether Article 6.1 is engaged, and particularly draw attention to, from paragraph 87 through to paragraph 93, on that issue. Then he deals from paragraph 95 with the question whether Mrs. Hayes was an independent tribunal. And then the third issue, whether the county court has full jurisdiction, from paragraph 98 through to 106. And again, Lord, in our submission, all, those are important passages.
Yes.
In terms of what Roona Begum decides and why. And then finally, Lord Walker, specifically on the civil rights issue, particularly from paragraph 112 through to the end.
Yes, thank you.
Lord, in our submission, Roona Begum now has to be considered in the light of subsequent Strasbourg decisions, notably at Sofiyo and Cromton. Lord Sofiyo is in volume seven of the Authorities, at tab 59. Sofiyo in the United Kingdom, concerned with housing benefit review boards as they once were, one sees from the second paragraph of the headnote, the last sentence, that the applicant was... the applicant was making submissions both for a prospective claim for housing and council tax benefit and to a backdated claim for both those benefits. And that the prospective claim was successful, but the council rejected the application for backdated benefit because she failed to show good cause why she'd not claimed the benefits earlier.
So that was the battleground for Strasbourg?
That was the battleground in Strasbourg, yeah. And then one sees that the fifth paragraph, the fifth paragraph of the headnote, the council's housing benefit and council tax benefit review board rejected the applicant's appeal against the refusal to pay backdated council tax and housing benefit based on a rejection of her evidence that she'd not received the relevant correspondence concerning the renewal of her claims. So in that respect, very similar to our case. Then, in the judgment, the then-housing benefit scheme is described, paragraph nineteen onwards of the court's judgment, housing benefit is a means-tested benefit payable towards housing costs in rented accommodation, though a benefit in cash, very akin to the benefit in kind under the homelessness legislation, is not dependent on or linked to the payment of contributions by the claimant, so a non-contributory benefit, administered by the local authority, payment subsidized by central government, normally to the extent of ninety-five percent, although where benefit is paid as a result of decision the claimant had good cause for a late claim, the subsidy is only fifty percent. Housing benefit is awarded for benefit periods, and entitlement for each period is dependent on a claim being made in time in accordance with the statutory rules. If a claimant makes a late claim, any entitlement to arrears depends on the claimant establishing good cause for having missed the deadline. Case law establishes that the concept of good cause involves an objective judgment as to whether this individual claimant, with his or her characteristics, did what could reasonably have been expected of them. Then there's a description of the board at the relevant time. A claim was first considered by officials employed by the local authority working in their housing department. If the benefit was refused, the claimant was entitled to a review, first by the local authority itself, then by a board which comprised up to five elected councillors from the local authority, since replaced by tribunals. The procedure before the review board was governed by the regulations. Regulation eighty-two provided, the procedure should be such as the chairman shall determine. Any person affected may make representations in writing, which must be considered, but also little seen. At the hearing, so there's a hearing, any affected person has the right to be heard and may be accompanied and may be represented by another person, whether professionally qualified or not, and for the purpose of the proceedings at the hearing, any representative shall have the rights and powers to which any person affected is entitled under these regulations and may call persons to give evidence and may put questions to any person who gives evidence. And the review board may call or for receive or hear representation and evidence from any person present as it considers appropriate. The review board's Good Practice Guide provided inter alia that the general principle underlying the proceedings was the observance of natural justice. The board should be fair and be seen to be fair to all parties at all times. The board was in law a separate body from the authority and independent. Before the hearing of a case, checks were carried out to ensure the board members had no previous dealings with the case, that they have no relationship with the claimant or any other person affected. And, my lord, notwithstanding all that, the court said, this isn't good enough because the body that's determined is made up of councillors from the authority which have an interest. But, my lord, one does see that that one point apart, the provisions for the, in regulation eighty-two, are much more favorable than the provisions in relation to the homelessness review. The board was much nearer to being a court, if I may put it that way, than the review officer could be said to be. Then from paragraph twenty-seven, the Human Rights Court considers administrative decision-making under our Human Rights Act, referring to Alcombebray, and then at paragraph thirty-two and thirty-one to Runa and onwards to Runa Begum. Then the, refers at paragraph thirty-four to the board being replaced by tribunals because of concerns about lack of independence with the potential for injustice. And then one comes to the body of the judgment, the alleged violation of Article six one. And section B of that, the court's assessment, begins at paragraph forty.
Yes.
And all this is a crucial part. The court recalls that disputes over entitlements to social security and welfare benefits generally fall within the scope of Article six one. And we rely on that, of course, and say there's no reason why the general provision shouldn't apply in the particular case. And one sees that that general proposition is supported in footnote sixteen by reference to Selezi and Meneto in Italy and Schullergrat in Switzerland. Then paragraph forty continues, that the court agrees with the parties, that the applicant's claim for housing benefit concerned the determination of her civil rights and that Article six one applied. So although that wasn't an issue, the court did express its agreement as to that. The applicant therefore had a right to a fair hearing before an independent impartial tribunal.
So we take from that the point, it wasn't really contested there?
No, but the court, rather than simply recording that it had been agreed, expressed its own agreement with the parties.
Yes, yes.
On that. My lord, then one sees that the board didn't have the necessary structural independence. Paragraph forty-one, and therefore, there needs to be control by a judicial body that provides full jurisdiction. And then there's reference to Bryan, and indeed, a quotation from Bryan at the top of the following page, the planning case, pointed out that there are other cases since that have followed Bryan in paragraph forty-four. And then paragraph forty-five, the domestic courts have also applied the principles in Bryan, notably the House of Lords in the planning case, Alcombebray, and Runa Begum. In the latter case, the House of Lords found that judicial review of a housing officer's decision that the claimant had been unreasonable in rejecting the accommodation offered to her provided sufficiency of review for Article six purposes. The House of Lords stressed that although the housing officer had been called upon to resolve some disputed factual issues, those, these findings of fact were, to use the words of Lord Bingham in that case, only staging posts on the way to much broader judgments concerning local conditions and the availability of alternative accommodation, which the housing officer had the specialist knowledge and experience to make. Although the housing officer could not be regarded as independent, there were safeguards and so forth. Departure from the procedural rules would have afforded a ground of appeal.
What are we to take from that paragraph?
Lord, that, the Strasbourg Court is approving the decision in, not only in Bryan and in Alcombebray, but also in Runa Begum, as a case on the issue of reasonableness or otherwise, suitability of accommodation or otherwise, of cases where the factual findings are only incidental, or, as it's put.
Is it necessarily approving? What it's doing is explaining what was decided in Alcombebray and Runa Begum, and then getting on in paragraph forty-six to say why this case is different.
Yes, yes, that's right.
I mean, it's not in a position to approve or disapprove.
No, no, your ladyship is.
Decisions of the domestic courts.
It's quite right, that would be presumptuous.
And it's not saying it's wrong, but it's saying it's different.
It's saying it's different, and that's our submission here.
Yes, well.
That is different.
Well, earlier on, I think you were hinting at the possibility, were you, that we might have to overrule?
Only if the court was to reject my distinction.
Right.
And my primary submission is the submission I addressed to the Court of Appeal.
Yes.
Runa Begum is distinguishable.
Yes.
Precisely for the reasons for which it was distinguished by the Strasbourg Court in the Sofiyo case, which I say applies four square to my case.
So your invitation really is to carry out a similar exercise, is it, to just see what Runa Begum does? Yes, that's fine, but this is a different case.
This is a different case.
And therefore, we go back to Strasbourg for guidance as to how we deal with this case, isn't it?
But one of the distinctions made in paragraph forty-seven is not only a contrast with the UK case, is it, Bryan, Runa Begum, but also the Strasbourg case, is, and this one seems to attach obvious significance to the difference between the board there, which has five councillors, and a review officer such as in Runa Begum, and equity obviously here.
Yes, I mean, it's a feature of all three cases, Runa Begum, Sofiyo in this case, that one does not have the, a sufficiently independent tribunal for Article six purposes.
Yeah, but that's not the point, has it?
And your lordship's point, of course, is that the difference between Sofiyo on the one hand, in terms of the way in which the board was composed.
Yes.
And Runa Begum and my case.
Yes.
On the other, in terms of the review officer. So, in that respect, I'm so to speak on the wrong side of the line. In every other respect, and in our submission, in the respects that matter, I say that I'm firmly on the right side of the line, although one needs to go back to paragraph forty-six before coming to paragraph forty-seven, because the court says crucially at the beginning of paragraph forty-six, the court considers that the decision-making process in the present case was significantly different. In Bryan, Runa Begum, and the other cases cited at paragraph forty-three above, the issues to be determined required a measure of professional knowledge or experience and the exercise of administrative discretion pursuant to wider policy aims. In contrast, in the instant case, the HBRB was deciding a simple question of fact, namely whether there was good cause for the applicant's decision in making a claim. On this question, the applicant had given evidence that the first she knew that anything was amiss with her claim for benefit was the receipt of a notice from her landlord, a housing association, seeking to repossess her flat because of rent arrears. The board found her explanation to be unconvincing and rejected her claim essentially on the basis of her assessment of her credibility. No specialist expertise was required to determine this issue, which is under the new system, determined by a non-specialist tribunal, not unlike the cases referred to. Can the factual findings in the present case be said to be merely incidental to the reaching of broader judgments of policy or expediency which it was for the democratically accountable authority to take? And, my lords, in two respects, I may fall to your eye to the Sofiyo situation, I may fall to your eye in that whether or not a letter was received is even more conspicuously a question of fact than whether or not there's good cause for delay. And secondly, the board has procedures involving a hearing in relation to a credibility issue of a kind that were superior to the provisions that apply in relation to a homelessness review. But Sofiyo, in any event, fully in our submission supports our case because it draws the distinction on the basis of looking at particular cases, between cases which require professional knowledge or experience, and it puts Runa Begum as well as Bryan and other cases and Alcombebray on that side of the line, and cases such as Sofiyo itself and such as the present case, where what is being determined is a simple question of fact. So, my lord, that in our submission is the crucial contrast that the court is drawing. And in our submission, on that contrast, we are on the Sofiyo side of the line, not the Runa Begum side of the line. Lord, then one comes to paragraph forty-seven, to which my Lord, Lord Brown, draws particular attention.
I only did because we, I think my parents' hail had simply pointed out that there was only a contrast with domestic in forty-six. I was merely pointing out there was a wider contrast drawn in forty-seven.
Well, there's, I do, I would not respectfully accept that it was a wider contrast, but a different contrast, a contrast on a different point being drawn in paragraph forty-seven. But then, one returns in paragraph forty-eight.
Oh, paragraph forty-seven is quite interesting, isn't it? And this is something that was discussed, as Lord Hope and I can recall, but unfortunately the other members of the court cannot, in the Croydon case, which is whether there's a distinction being drawn between independence of the executive and independence of the parties to the case, which you see, it comes in the first sentence of paragraph forty-seven.
Yes.
Clearly, the court was there concerned that it wasn't only officers or administrative officers who were making this decision, it was actually councillors. And councillors were parties to the case, in a way that seemed, they seemed to think that officers, albeit of the same council, perhaps were not, when they're looking at Runa Begum and looking at the review officer.
Yeah.
As somebody who was not independent of the executive, but was independent of the council itself.
Yes.
Difficult distinctions to draw, but they seem to be drawing that distinction.
They do seem to be drawing that distinction when, describing the position under our law, in my submission, is not a well-founded distinction. One cannot distinguish in terms of lack of independence and lack of, in whatever sense of independence, according as to whether the decision-maker is a member of the council or an officer of the council. So that doesn't work. Perhaps more importantly, when one looks at the structure of the judgment in Sofiyo, the beginning of paragraph forty-six, the court considers that the decision-making process in the present case was significantly different. They gave two reasons. The first reason is in paragraph forty-six, the second reason is in paragraph forty-seven. It's the reason in paragraph forty-six upon which I rely, and that's taken up again in paragraph forty-eight. The applicant had her claim refused because the board did not find her a credible witness. Whilst the High Court had the power to quash the decision, if it considered inter alia that there was no evidence to support the fact or findings, or that its findings were plainly untenable, or that it had misunderstood or been ignorant and established in relevant fact, it did not have jurisdiction to rehear the evidence or substitute its own view as to the applicant's credibility. Thus, in this case, there was never the possibility that the central issue would be determined by a tribunal that was independent of one of the parties to the dispute. It follows that there's been a violation of Article six one.
Isn't the final sentence, paragraph forty-eight, picking up forty-seven?
Yes.
Yes.
That gets our hearts back to forty-seven.
Well, I wondered about the first sentence of paragraph forty-six, that's picking up the last bit of forty-five, isn't it? Because, or just taking it, the second last sentence of forty-five, the word although begins the sentence, although the housing officer could not be regarded as independent and so on, so on, the statute of regulations provided substantial safeguards to ensure the review would be independently and fairly conducted. That's, then, that's said to be distinctly different in Sofiyo. And are you accepting that in this case, we're closer to the Runa Begum side of the line?
No, my lord, I'm not, that, again, it comes back to the point of whether officers can really be said to be more independent than members of the same authority.
Well, I think, sorry to interrupt you, but I think the point they're making is that it would be independently conducted, it's the way the adjective is used there. I think they've already accepted they can't really be said to be independent, after all they're employed. But it's the way in which the thing is conducted, they're then looking at, and saying, well, the process of review that's being set out is one which enables not only fair the process of review that's being set out is one which enables not only fairness but independence to be observed. It's a very subtle kind of distinction again, but I mean, this is, I'm just wondering what you say, the state of affairs is here.
Well, I say, when one looks at the procedures that are being carried out, as distinct from who is carrying out those procedures, that the Housing Benefit Review Board was much better than the review procedure of the officer under the procedure regulations under the Housing Act.
As we're told, almost nothing about what's to happen in the review by the officer in this case, are we? We're told who he's to be.
Well, the officer simply conducts a desktop paper review, considering written representations that have been submitted, and that's it.
Well, that's not quite right, is it? Because I thought the review officer, in fact, it was, who telephoned in this first case and asked Miss Ali why she'd refused the property, and it was on that phone call that she said, I know that later she explained that there was a misunderstanding as to what she was referring to, but she said she'd received the offer letter.
Lord, it may go, of course, a particular review officer in a particular case may take it a little further, but the requirements of the regulations are very limited as compared with the requirements that apply to the Housing Benefit Review Board, and on the facts as well. It's very different having the phone call on the one hand, and on the other hand, having a hearing and having witnesses called and having cross-examination of witnesses and having credibility findings made on that basis.
I mean, one thing perhaps you are entitled to say is that actually, her case, that this was a misunderstanding as to what she had been referring to, has never been heard by anybody at all.
Well, indeed, both in Mrs. Ali's case and Mrs. Ibrahim's case, if one looks at the detailed facts, there are matters which would have been well worth being explored in a proper judicial fashion. The, in Mrs. Ibrahim's case, there are a number of features of the evidence which call out for further examination.
It's quite a sharp contrast, actually, and this is your point really, I think. If you look at Sofiho, page 462, top of the page, we can see the procedure that they say enables the matter to be independently and fairly addressed. And then one contrasts that with tab eight in volume one of the authorities', paragraph eight of the Regulations, and it doesn't say any more than that the reviewer shall just consider representations and, if you so mind it, he can do various things, and that's just about it.
Yeah, yeah. Making it all too easy to say, well, we sent the letter, or we think we did, likely it is you must have received it, whatever you say to the contrary. Notwithstanding, of course, what term is, in practical terms, on that conclusion. But, my lord, a short but important point on Sofiho is that it's not drawing a distinction between the housing benefit scheme and the homeless person's scheme, it's drawing a distinction between the situation in Sofiho itself and the situation in Runa Begum. And in our submission, there's no support in Sofiho, or indeed elsewhere in the Strasbourg jurisprudence, for looking at Article 6 in terms of whole statutes or whole parts of statutes. On the contrary, what is required is to look at the features of particular cases. There's simply no sufficient rationale for a one-size-fits-all approach. There's no reason why what may be the right answer under one section of an act should also be the right answer under another section, even in the same part, or indeed why what is right for one question under a statutory provision should be right for a wholly different question, even if it arises under the same statutory provision. Lord, in our submission, the analysis of Sofiho is that the decision is predicated on there being a determination of a civil right. The court then proceeds to distinguish the respective natures of the decisions in Runa Begum and in Sofiho itself, and that the, although of course, there are differences between the housing benefit scheme and the homelessness scheme, what they have in common outweighs the differences. They're both schemes of social welfare for the benefit of the public at large, they both contain detailed self-contained and exhaustive procedures for enforcing the duties of the authority in relation to determination and provision of benefits. Neither is enforceable by private law action in relation to what has been provided. The features of the scheme, whatever differences there may be at the margins, in essential respects, what applies to housing benefit applies to homelessness as well, they are, for present purposes, effectively identical. The only real difference is that housing benefit assessment results in payment of money, whereas the full housing duty requires accommodation to be secured. But we say that the distinction of the type of benefit is not sufficient to permit a completely different approach to be taken between the two welfare benefit schemes, given the fundamental features that they have in common. And, my lord, we do say that in Sofiho, the housing benefit review is in some respects nearer to Article 6 compliance, because one has a panel rather than a single individual, one has the right to attend a hearing, right to cross-examination and so forth, rather than a procedure in relation to which orality is at best peripheral, as with homelessness not going beyond at the most a phone call, which may be all right for making representations, but not for deciding issues of credibility or other issues that really require cross-examination of witnesses. And, my lord, the, at any rate, there is some difference between officers of the authority on the one hand and members on the other, which give the members a degree of independence. When one's talking about officers, the two officers, the initial decision-making officer and the review officer, not only employed by the same authority in the same department in a small authority, and although we are concerned with Birmingham City Council, of course, housing is a, in two-tier areas of local government, is dealt with at the district level by the smaller district councils, in a small housing authority, not only, the review officer and the original decision-maker will not only be in the same department, they may even share the same office, and although one is senior to the other, that is not quite the same degree of distinction as there is on the one hand between the officer corps and on the other hand, the elected members.
At least we don't have in this case, the point that's picked up in 47 about the councillors being the elected members of an authority that suffers a penalty if it allows late payments. I mean, that's quite a striking feature of the claim, the reimbursement from government is reduced in that situation, it's really, in effect, a penalty if you're going to be generous.
Yes, but that would be equally true, of course, if the final decision had been made by officers in the council rather than by members, and the way in which the problem has been overcome, of course, is not by saying, let's make it officers as with homelessness, rather than members as with the board, it's saying, let's have an independent tribunal outside the authority altogether, so far as housing benefit is concerned, which is the position which now applies. So the...
Well, it had already applied before Sofiho got to Strasbourg, didn't it?
Indeed it had.
The government had taken a realistic view about what they were likely to suffer in Strasbourg.
By quite a margin. So, yes, there's a financial interest, but equally, of course, the authority has a financial interest in not being under the duty to provide the accommodation, to secure the provision of the accommodation, which is necessarily an expensive matter for the authority. And so the interest exists either way round. Lord, the issue in Runa Begum, on the other hand, was whether the accommodation offered was suitable. In our submission, that contrasts not only with the situation in Sofiho, whether there's good cause for delay in making the claim, but contrasts with the present situation. And, my lord, Lady Hale raised earlier the question of the various factual issues that might arise under the Housing Act. One of those, of course, is whether there's good cause for making an application out of time for the review procedure. In our submission, that's very close to the Sofiho situation, it would be extraordinary, to say the least, if Sofiho was not to apply to that sort of issue when it arose in the homelessness context as well as the housing benefit context. Our submission, that simply reinforces that the true distinction is between the nature of the decision under consideration and what was in issue, not the separate scheme, and that in our case, the point is even stronger than good cause for delay, namely, were letters received. These appeals, therefore, are not merely on the Sofiho side of the line, Runa Begum side of the line, they are a fortiori to Sofiho itself.
Would that be a convenient point to break? Can you give us some idea of how timing is to proceed? Normally we get a timetable of the time councillors expect to take, but we haven't been favoured with that.
And, my lord, we have discussed amongst ourselves, if email communication committees call, discussion, and on that basis, I've so to speak been given until three-ish this afternoon, but, my lord, I expect to finish earlier than that. I, my lord, I want to invite the lordship to look fairly closely at the case of Crompton in the United Kingdom, but that is the greater part of what I still have to deal with.
Well, shall we do that at two o'clock?
Yes.
Thank you very much.